The meeting to order, which I will do now. Why don't we have all call and we'll start with Kim.
Kimberly Watts.
Anna Sullivan.
David Schwartz.
Jill Clamper.
Mike Gray.
Allison Iverson.
Who did, Sheldon?
He's in the hallway.
Oh, I didn't.
He's literally in the hallway.
Andy Drach. We'll wait a minute for Sheldon to get back. And he's got.
Oh, Prince, got it, got it, got it, got it. I got it. Give me my glasses before I can actually see. How are you doing?
I just remember people.
August is ending well?
Yeah.
That's not me. It's not me because I left my day on.
Okay, Sheldon has arrived. So the next order of business is approval of the agenda that we have before us. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion approved.
Second?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The agenda is now approved. The next will be to approve the minutes from the last meeting of July 23rd. Obviously, I welcome any comments or corrections.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do we approve the agenda that's been modified from the one we were...
You should have approved the agenda that he's...
Oh, yeah.
He said it was in front of you, so that's the one that...
Yeah.
I assumed your approval was for.
No, it wasn't, but now it is.
Okay.
So, I think that's fine. So, we will therefore go to the minutes. And any comments, questions, corrections about the minutes? I'll take a motion for the approval of the minutes from July 23rd.
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. The next is the matter of discussion on a short-term rental with the planning consultant. Ben, why don't you just give us an overview? The public is here, it will be asked to participate in at its perspective, but why don't you educate us?
Thank you.
And frame the issue before us.
Sure, thank you. It's my understanding that at some point within the last six months or so, the city has received an application or at least an inquiry to do an Airbnb. Airbnb is a term that you hear most frequently, but it's a brand. So what we'd like to refer to as short-term rentals. And short-term rentals includes a lot of different options, which I described in my memo and I'll briefly describe tonight. When I went online in June, there has been one house that I noticed that had been rented out through a website on the main popular sites that used for this. So there's currently one house in Huntington Woods that is being rented out for a short-term rental. But like I said, there are multiple types of short-term rentals. There is owner occupied, primary residence. So someone rents their house for a weekend or a week, they go out of town, they rent their house out. There's non-owner occupied where someone buys a house for the purpose of short-term rentals. You probably would not have that here, but it happens in a lot of resort towns, college towns, et cetera, people do that. They buy a house and they don't live there, they simply rent it out for the purposes of short-term rentals. There's a home stay where someone actually lives in the home and rents out a room or a series of rooms while they stay there for short-term rentals. There's a bed and breakfast, which we're all familiar with what a bed and breakfast are. There's a residence hotel, which we think of now as an extended stay hotel. We don't have any of those, obviously, in Huntington Woods. There's a boarding house where people actually rent rooms for longer periods of time, typically 30 days or more, they actually rent a room and live in that room. There is accessory apartment option where someone actually has a separate, basically, housing unit within their existing home, either as part of their existing home or detached above a garage, something like that. You heard the term for that, accessory dwelling unit or mother-in-law suite. Those are becoming more and more common. And then there is a couch stay where someone basically literally rents a couch and sleeps on a couch in the house. So those are the options that there are for short-term rentals. I think some of these probably are not applicable here, I don't think they're going to happen here. For example, an extended stay, I don't think we need to get into discussions about allowing or not allowing extended stay. But some of these are potentials to happen here in Huntington Woods. And so I have a list of questions that the planning commission should consider tonight, as well as public input. And the first, the fundamental question is, does the city want to regulate short-term rentals? Is it a problem? Do you anticipate it being a problem? There are a lot of ways to regulate it. Most communities, we work for 80 communities in the state, I asked around our office and no community that we work for actually does have a short-term rental ordinance. They deal with it through other means than actually having a zoning ordinance. I looked further out and did some research in Michigan. I think there's probably around 30 or so communities that actually do have a short-term ordinance in place. Most of those are actually on the west coast in resort towns that actually have a lot of frequent travelers and visitors, et cetera. I couldn't find many in this area of the state that actually has an ordinance that regulates short-term rentals. So the question is, does the city really, do they want to regulate short-term rentals? Do you want to get into that practice of doing it? And then if allowed, if you do want to regulate, what short-term rentals are you going to allow and what are you going to regulate? And there's a series of questions with that. And if the city does want to allow and does want to regulate, do you have the staff to monitor, regulate, and permit these types of rentals? And then lastly, if not allowed, how do you handle one-off situations? For example, a professor leaves for the summer and wants to rent his house out for Onis and Sabbatical, or you want to gas a stay in your house for a week while you're on vacation, do we want to start regulating those types of visions? So I leave that as kind of the background. I'm here to answer any questions of you, but I think the first question that the city should really consider is, do you want to regulate? Or do you want to just not regulate them and allow the market to deal with these issues?
Allow the market?
Yes.
What do you mean a market?
So by not putting an ordinance in place, you're basically saying that we are not going to regulate them. If people want to rent their house out, they can do so. That's how a lot of communities have actually operated currently on this matter. How they treat it, though, is they treat it through nuisance complaint operation. So if you rent a house to a neighbor, the neighbor's too loud, you call the city, you call the police, et cetera, and you do it through a nuisance regulatory. You don't actually have a provision in your ordinance that says, "We do not allow," or "We do allow" short-term rentals. That's how most communities do it.
Okay, before we ask the members of the planning commission for their comments, I'd like to ask Hank, you know, what you think tonight's goal should be as a result of this discussion amongst ourselves and with the community?
Well, I think where this should probably go next is, in order to have Ben proceed any further, if that is in fact what you wanted him to do, I think you need to take public input and public participation. So once we see what, if any, residents or people here that want to speak on this particular item have to say about it, the planning commission can take one option. The city commission has given us 180-day moratorium on short-term rentals to allow for consideration of this. So that means you can do one of a couple of things. One, you can reject it outright or recommend to the city commission that they don't take action on it, and either, as Ben had said, it's possibly a nuisance, if and when it becomes a nuisance, or you can regulate it in varying degrees based on what Ben has told us are the different types of short-term rentals. Or you can take the information that you have, give us your thoughts on it, let Ben, I, or Ben, or, you know, some combination thereof, take your whack at some crafting of some things and some situations that may occur based on what we hear tonight, and come back. We have 180 days to deal with this.
Okay.
So, I mean, it wouldn't be a rush for you to, you know, give a yea or nay tonight by any stretch of the imagination, I didn't expect that at all.
Okay. Why don't we start with Allison, and why don't we take it...
Did you want to take public participation first?
I was thinking that public participation, well, sure, that could inform our discussions.
Right.
So I will open it up for public participation, anyone wanting to comment on this particular issue. Why don't you stand up, identify your name and address? Thank you.
I'm Melissa Levine, and I had rental properties in Ann Arbor with student properties, and it was a nine-month lease, a year lease, whatever, and they trashed it every single year. So I am not in favor of the short-term. If he wants to do something like somebody buys a house, like a builder, and then they want to put their people into a place, then that's one thing. But these short-term leases are a recipe for disaster.
Thank you. What's your address?
10045 Nadine.
Thank you. Someone else wanting to make a comment? Sir?
Good evening, my name is James Iodice.
Your address, please.
Oh, I actually live outside the city.
Could you spell your last name for...
I-O-D-I-C-E.
Thank you.
I have the privilege of serving as the 2018 president of the Greater Metropolitan Association of Realtors, and for the past 18 years, I am also Realtor, and for the past 18 years, I've done most of my work here in Oakland County. I should also mention, I'm a non-paid volunteer, and so the hours that I spend working on behalf of the organization are because I care deeply about the profession and real property rights. GMAR, as we refer to it, is the largest local trade association in Michigan, representing over 8,200 Realtors in metro Detroit, hundreds of whom who do business here, and over 60 of which actually live here in Huntington Woods. As Realtors, we pride ourselves on being subject matter experts, so I would like to thank you for the opportunity to share our experience regarding short-term rentals and how to best balance the rights of property owners while maintaining thriving neighborhoods. Mr. Carlisle actually covered a lot of the issues and put it very succinctly, do you really want to regulate those or do you want to use existing ordinance? Issues arise when ordinances against short-term rentals are so drastic that they serve the local, they serve the goal of eliminating all rentals and forcing owner occupancy, thus trampling on property ownership rights. GMAR supports registration and regulatory ordinances directed at specific issues as they treat both owner occupied and rental homes fairly. As you'll recall, this issue was first brought to the attention of the planning commission after the city determined existing ordinance were silent to the subject of short-term rentals. We believe that the best solution would be to amend Chapter 8, Article 10 of the Code of Ordinances to include a definition of short-term rentals, which would subject those properties to existing registration and inspection requirements, meaning, in essence, city officials and neighbors would be aware of the activity. Opponents to short-term rentals often raise alarms regarding noise, parking, loitering, all of which are currently regulated by Chapter 24 of the Code of Ordinances. We would hope that city officials would utilize these rules to better manage and fine unruly property owners and occupants. We also recommend that you carefully review the other existing ordinances, which could address many of the perceived problems. In our review, we found that zoning ordinance has, that the zoning ordinance has restrictions which may not have been previously considered. Questions on short-term rentals are raised most often in single-family zoning districts. In those districts, Huntington Woods, zoning ordinance restricts occupancy to single-family house and has a specific definition of the family that may occupy the house. A violation of the zoning ordinances can result in civil infraction enforceable against the owner of the property. If the planning commission decides that additional action is required above and beyond expanding the scope of the landlord ordinance and existing nuanced ordinances, please consider the model ordinance and good neighbor policy we provided prior to tonight's meeting. These policies are a fair and simple model that have been successfully implemented by a number of local communities in Michigan, and they require local agents or management for distant owners and encourage responsible owners and renters with enforcement that does not overwhelm local governments with limited resource. Again, thank you for the opportunity to share our experience as subject matter experts regarding short-term rentals. We look forward to furthering this discussion and being a resource for Huntington Woods throughout this entire process. With that, I'll answer any questions or try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Next public comment, sir?
Can I...
Would you like to answer?
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't know what the process was.
Yeah, neither did I, because we never really had some guy come in who's a subject matter expert, so I didn't know whether we should give you two minutes or not.
I appreciate that. Thank you for the additional...
Why don't you...
So, if I understand your position, it's no, first, use the existing nuisance ordinance if that's not deemed appropriate, use a registration-style ordinance?
The first choice would be use the existing ordinance. We feel as though that is broad enough in scope for you to take the action that you feel necessary. If you feel that that's not enough, then these model ordinances are the first best step to achieve the goal if you don't believe that the nuisance ordinance...
You mentioned both those positions, but you didn't mention why you support them.
The reason we support them is, going beyond the scope of those ordinances or your existing ordinance begins to look at properties for uses other than they are. So the minute you begin to regulate beyond the scope of the specific single-family or whatever the zoning is, then you begin to step on the ownership rights for whatever that particular zoning is. What we've seen, and Mr. Carlisle mentioned some of the municipalities on the west side of the state, what we've seen are municipalities that go beyond the scope of the zoning ordinances and begin to regulate property in a commercial fashion when it's a residential-type property, as an example.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. You're talking about, on the other side of the state, and regulating them as commercial rather than residential. It is a commercial property when you're using it specifically for rental, is it not?
No.
Why is that?
We have, I spoke with a Realtor active in Marquette, and they had the very same question in the Marquette board. And one of the public stood up and they said, they were an elderly person, and they said without the ability to rent out a room, they wouldn't be able to afford to live in the house that they're in.
I understand, but that doesn't answer the question, why it's not a commercial venture?
Because it's a residential property, used for residential use.
But if you have, if you have, if you have a property, say, one of the things that we were included in here was Holland, Michigan, was one of the things that you sent out, Hank. Holland has any number, and I'm familiar with it because I spent a lot of time there. My parents live there, I'm out there a lot. There are areas there that are specifically rental, short-term rentals. And if the homeowner never lives there, and it is only short-term rentals or long-term rentals, it is a commercial property at that point, is it not?
If that were the case, what would happen to the existing houses that are rental-only? And I think that last year there were at least seven, and currently on the market, I think there are four or five.
You're saying within Huntington Woods?
Mm-hmm.
But I believe that there's a difference between a long-term rental and a short-term rental, correct?
Correct.
And I think that the concern that's being raised is not with the long-term rental where you have a lease agreement that is a year, you know, or even the people who are redoing their home and they rent another house for six months to a year, and it's intended to be a place to live and to, you know, keep your family during a time that you're either renovating your own home, or this is what you've chosen to do, is rent this house on a long-term basis because you're moving into the neighborhood. There's a difference between that and a short-term rental. Someone comes in for a weekend, comes, leaves, someone comes in for three days here, they rent it, there's one person renting it for a week here, one person renting it for a week here, one person for three days here, and there are people coming and going all the time, and the neighbors are then having to, if the people that are coming in are causing a problem, then the neighbors are constantly resorting to the nuisance ordinance, calling the police, calling the city, calling whatever. There's a difference. If there's nobody living there on a consistent basis in that short-term rental, it is a commercial property, it is a commercial venture. And I don't understand how you can say that it's a residential home...
I haven't, I, in, my apologies, I don't understand in your explanation the difference between a 12-month lease and a two-week lease as it relates to converting a property from residential to commercial. If it's...
I think they're both commercial.
If a family lives in it for two days versus 12 months, it's still a residential home.
I think they're both commercial.
Right.
I was just differentiating between a long-term rental, where there's a little skin in the game, and a short-term rental where you're in and gone. But I think you're both a commercial venture.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I should have directed my question.
If the homeowner never lives in the house and is using it strictly for rental-only, it, to me, seems it would be a commercial property.
And I think that you stated your position, and yours is very clear, unless you guys are prepared to agree with each other.
No, I just wanted to...
No, I was trying to understand, my, I did not, I didn't want to seem combative, I was just trying to understand.
It seemed as though you were considering a rental property that potentially the homeowner never lives in to be a residential property, and I was saying it was a commercial property, and I was trying to understand how you consider it to be residential. I understand your point of, an elderly couple lives there, they leave for the winter, they rent it out while they're gone, they, you know, they come back, they live in it, they are living in it for part of the time. Okay, I can see that that is a residential property, but if the homeowner never lives in it, to me, I view it as a commercial property. So do we disagree on that?
We do.
Okay, then, moving on.
Moving on. Any other questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Sir?
No, no, I just wanted to make sure that...
My name is Shimon Adut. I'm not politician, I will talk straight to the target.
What's your address, sir?
10075 Nadine.
Thank you.
If anybody wants to leave this house, first couple a reservation, I have to know. Maintenance, sanitation, traffic, and noise. If the guys can observe this condition, do you know?
I don't understand your point. I want to make sure.
I mean, anybody that comes, you know, for a day, two days, three days, I want to be sure, you know, there is no garbage around. Second of all, no parties, no noise 24 hours, and trafficking nonstop around that house, you know, who knows who coming, and all of this.
So have you observed this? Have you had a problem with this? Or are you just making a statement?
I don't want to have a problem, you know?
Got it. That's what I was trying to understand.
Thank you, sir. Mark? Let's go to Mark first. No, let's go to Mark first because...
It's like a one, it's one sentence.
Okay.
You're right, it's a commercial because you pay different taxes.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
I'm Mark Rosenblatt, 8/20 Nadine. I just wanted to, I don't know, good, bad, whatever, but I do know that rental homes are treated a little bit differently by the city and inspections that are needed in order to be a rental home. Smoke detectors kept up, railings kept up, can't be, you know, hazards in the concrete sidewalks or in the driveway. I just want to make sure the city sort of considers everything because if it's a short-term renter, is the city opening themselves up for possibly, you know, this house not being inspected properly as a rental home, somebody trips and falls, hurts themselves, a fire, whatever happens, does the city have a problem or could the city have a problem? And then do we have the staff, like you said, on the city to run around to every single house to check on all these things?
Thank you. Anyone else? Public participation? Sir?
Yes, I'm sorry to be late, I was having some trouble with a computer that I needed help with, of course. Fredlin Home, associate broker with Real Estate One in Woodward. I also happen to be a contractor, licensed contractor, for a long time. I have sold several houses here in Huntington Woods, one on Talbot and one on Elgin recently that were torn down and being, were rebuilt like this. Those plans were very similar to the plan that I've reviewed here. In fact, probably all the houses that have been torn down and built are very similar to this plan.
Are you, we're discussing short-term rentals right now. Are you commenting on the right topic?
You are, I'm sorry. No, I have just got, just came in and thought you were talking about the plan for this house.
Nope.
I'll save my content, my remarks for later.
No problem. Sorry, Andy.
Anyone else? Public participation is closed. Why don't we open it up, Allison? Why don't you ask any questions of Hank or Ben or anyone else, and then we'll move into line.
So is there some way that we could identify, I mean, I was thinking of what he just said, like you have inspections, you know, identifying these homes, filing, getting an annual fee, paying an annual fee for an inspection, to be able to have the ability to rent your home. I think that restricting it completely is not necessarily fair as a homeowner. I did rent my home out for a short-term, for someone who was doing construction in the neighborhood, turned in the long-term because their house went down, but, in the process, but it was a short-term, and it solved a problem that I had, and, you know, they were residents. I don't, I don't really see us, like, as a buzzing hub for, like, people moving, coming here to go to the Detroit Zoo. Like, I don't see, we're not a destination location in Huntington Woods. We might be for a business crew. So I think, I hesitate going to the extreme of prohibiting it, but I think that the nuisance ordinance, so, I don't know, just maybe something that could identify, I mean, can we, can we have some sort of...
Yeah, some communities take that approach, where they don't, they don't regulate them, but they do require you to do, to do some sort of licensing or registration with the...
With the gentleman from the...
With the city.
From the real estate.
Yeah, and then the question, the question then becomes, in addition to licensing and registration with the city, do you want to make them part of the rental inspection program? I, over the weekend, I had a conversation with the planning director in the city of Ann Arbor, because obviously in Ann Arbor, there's a lot of this, how they, they do not regulate them. Their position on it is simply, if you rent your house out for more than 30 days, you fall under rental, full-time rental, and then you enter the rental program. If it's less than 30 days, they do not regulate them, they do not require you to register with the city or license with the city or anything like that. So that's, that's one of their, that's their approach to this.
Anything else, Allison? Sheldon?
I'm not worried about Huntington Woods turning into Ann Arbor. Hank is rental of residential home, and we're talking about those, the 98% of Huntington Woods that's single-family residential.
Yeah.
Is rental of that, short-term, long-term, permitted use, special use, barred use, under current ordinance?
No, we have a landlord provision in our ordinance that allows them to rent houses. So you can rent a house. There is some requirements, there's an application, there is an inspection that has to happen. And yes, as Mr. Rosenblatt alluded to, they go in, they look for smoke detectors, make sure all your egresses unblocked, your water heaters, gas furnace certifications, a lot of that, all that is part of our landlord licensing requirements.
Is it, are there, are the definitions such that there are time limits involved or frequency or anything like that?
No, and that's where, that's one of the reasons that we come to the planning commission to see, this may turn into something where you choose to do nothing, or you may do something, or you may address only, I think Ben gave about, like, eight different examples of the different types of short-term rentals that they might be. You may choose to regulate three of those, disallow one, and let three go, you know, to whatever, you know, equation that comes up to. The question really becomes, do you want to study it? Do you want the information and do you want to thoroughly vet it before making a decision?
I certainly would support some further study, because like with any other legislative function, you're talking about drawing lines, how often, what terms, if, I tend, I tend to agree with what Jill said, in terms of commercial, when it becomes a business, it, and that needs a definitional approach that's as clear as possible, so the city can administer it and the residents can understand it. But I do think it needs some looking at, I, I'm not sure what a moratorium means on the part of the city. If it's not regulated now, a moratorium just means it's not regulated. I don't get that, there's no licensing requirement.
Well, we look at it right now as a single-family residential, so more than two families are occupying it, and one person's paying rent to the other person to occupy it, that's a two-person, that's a violation of our zoning ordinance. So the moratorium on it would actually be putting people on notice that we don't allow that, at least for 180 days. After the 180 days, depending on what the city commission does with the recommendation of the planning commission, that may change. But having said that, we have 180 days to study this, and right now, currently, there should be no... But having said that, we have a hundred and eighty days to study this and right now, currently, there should be no short-term rentals in the city of Huntington Woods.
I, if it's not regulated now, I'm, that explanation doesn't help me understand what's prohibited for the next hundred and eighty days. But I'm not sure.
Short-term rentals.
Huh?
Short-term rentals.
But it's not regulated now, they don't have to register, they don't have to do anything now, right?
No, there's, what it means is, is that, see, there's a gray area with this and that's one of the reasons that we're bringing it to you. Part of the problem that you have is, is that people were specifically calling to purchase homes to rent as short-term rentals in the city of Huntington Woods. That's how it came up. So those people that are legitimately trying to do this, and I applaud them for being above board with it, came in, they now know that they can't do that for at least a hundred and eighty days. It's not going to necessarily stop that, which we don't know exists, but it does give us an opportunity to work with the people, to see what happens with what the desires of the planning commission are, and ultimately what the city commission's put the position on it.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
I think this is a non-issue, I really do, it's, we're not a beach town, we're not a college town. It sounds like we've got existing landlord language in, in the ordinance. I agree with, with Allison that maybe some kind of a registration would be required, but to, to create, reinvent the wheel on this seems crazy. That's it.
Thank you.
Hank, how many rentals do we have in Huntington Woods, do you know?
Not off the top of my head, but we do have a few, I'm going to guess somewhere in the neighborhood of fifty or so.
And how many of those would you consider to be in use for short-term rental right now?
That I wouldn't even hazard a guess.
Okay, so we don't know if we have a problem or not?
Uh, we know that we have had problems in the past.
Have those problems in the past been with rental landlords in general or short-term rental?
Short-term.
Define short-term for me.
Short-term is, we had a couple of phone calls, and people don't always give their names and not everything is always documented. But what happens, I, I can tell you that a couple of people have called. One was dissatisfied with new people living next door with her children playing on the front lawn every day. That was a concern that she had that she expressed to the city. And another was partying and people coming in at all hours of the night. Those were a couple of the concerns that we had heard of that. So having said those, we did address those and we did address it under the nuisance ordinance, like Ben was suggesting that we could. And it may be that that's all that we need to do, but having said that, there's, Ben has delineated several different things. So, instead of just taking that, we wanted to get the planning commission's input and we also wanted to hear from the public, so hence, it comes before you.
So, let me ask this, if, if you did nothing and rentals, these short-term rentals start popping up, how much of an increase in workload do you think would it hap, would fall on the city?
It's hard to anticipate that, because we do things mostly on a complaint basis. So, if it was rentals and they registered and they went through the same inspection process that a long-term rental would, that would just add to the building official who's a contracted individual, so they would just add more inspections to that. And that's done on a contractual basis, so it's not like it would increase the workload on staff. As far as code enforcement or as far as public safety, that would be on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, so, though I very much would sympathize with the mother who has children playing outside with people next door changing and coming in and out all the time, I, I can very much sympathize with that. I think that if we chose to spend a little time studying maybe parts of this, I don't, I don't see us becoming a place where somebody's renting out a room in someone's house and that becoming a problem. I, I don't see a boarding house popping up anytime soon in Huntington Woods. And, and it's interesting, Allison, you talked about, you know, we're not a beach town, we're not a destination town. We're actually pretty well situated for people who want to explore Detroit, and a lot of people do want to explore Detroit. And there's, because there's some really cool things happening within the city and there's a lot of neat things going on. And it's a, a nice place to come and stay and not be worried about, you know, where you're staying or where you're living because it's a nice little bedroom community. I don't want to necessarily borrow trouble or create work where none exists. Let me ask this question, if we did nothing and we found that there was an uptick in nuisance problems coming up, this could be revisited?
Anything could be revisited, it's just whether or not, the, the reason that it was brought to you was because for your recommendation to see whether or not it's, there's enough information to be worth studying.
Okay.
It's, this is just, this is, this is a, kind of like a fact finding and to get a feel for what the pleasure of the planning commission is with respect to this.
Thank you.
Hank, when you talk about studying the issue, I mean, what exactly do you envision happening?
Well, what I would envision happening, and perhaps Ben might have some input on this as well, but what I would see is taking a look at our ordinances and seeing where perhaps we could do anything from nothing to minor tweaks of our existing ordinances to a separate chapter. And depending on where we feel the need falls, and by we, I mean collectively, the planning commission, the residents, the Huntington Woods staff, the whole nine yards, where we feel that we need to go with this, or do we feel we need to go anywhere with this? So, but I think that what it does is it allows us to present some things to you and see where we feel we may strengthen our existing ordinance, or we may not need to, but at least we'll have something concrete to throw out there for you to take a look at.
Okay. And Ben, I had one question. Ann Arbor, you said, has a thirty-day, is that thirty consecutive days or just thirty days in a calendar year?
You know, I, I don't know the answer to that, I don't, I, I would assume it would be consecutive days, but I don't know the answer to that.
Then is, is there an effective way, you know, obviously, people coming forward to say, I'm going to rent my house this way, but is there a way to police this? Or is it someone has to go online, I don't mean the police police, but I mean, do you have to go and check every website and see which houses are listed?
Yes, you either do it that way or you would do it through a nuisance complaint. Your, your neighbor calls you and complains, you know, to the city, and then the city goes out and says, you didn't register, or whatever rule, if we put a rule in place, you didn't follow these rules. So it would either be done via the city monitoring sites and activities or people calling on their neighbors.
And Allison? Gary?
Yeah, I guess I'm not convinced there's something, we ought to spend a ton of time coming up with regulation around at the moment. If it, if others felt it was necessary, I would lean towards registration rather than trying to regulate the industry itself. I think it's too complex to come up with something meaningful.
I tend to agree. I, I had started to do a little research on my own when we first talked about this and, and didn't bring any of it with because I did not know that this was an agenda item tonight, but my inclination is, is well, that we have existing ordinances and we should enforce those if there's a problem. If it becomes an issue beyond that, then we can look into some things, but I don't personally think that we should be regulating the types of use a homeowner can have. And to, to your point, Jill, I think when you talk about commercial versus residential, yes, that could be perceived as a business if you're renting a room, but so is having a, a professional office in your house using that.
Yeah, I agree.
And so, then if, you know, if we needed to add it to that ordinance, although I hesitate doing that too, I think, I, I already don't like that ordinance because it picks and chooses which occupations are deemed appropriate, which ones are not. And I think that the nuisance ordinance can handle those until, until we learn otherwise. What I'm hearing is Hank is aware of a couple of instances and brought it to our attention and, and two instances does not make a problem.
It's not a problem, I agree. I was just trying to understand his point of view versus, of residential versus commercial.
I, I think the ordinances are different for commercial properties and residential ones, and I think this still does fall into residential.
Okay.
Excuse me, something, can I ask, I can see the most-
Actually, no, public participation is closed right now, and I wanted to ask you a couple of questions. Did you say that you have eighty clients and not one of them has regulated this area?
Not one of them has, has a specific ordinance provision to regulate short-term rentals. Some do it by the licensing, but they, no one has it in the resulting ordinance.
Okay, and are you aware of any suburban community in the Detroit area that has regulated this in the way that you're talking about tonight?
I'm not aware, I didn't do an exhaustive search, but I'm not aware of any, I'm sure, I'm sure there are.
No. What we did basically with this was, is that we wanted to bring it to your attention before we spent a lot of time and resources on it to kind of see where you were at. This can range, again, anything from us making a couple tweaks in an existing ordinance proposed to you or, you know, follow the direction if the planning commission decides not to deal with this at all.
Okay, sir, okay, I want to get those out, and then I'm going to open it up very briefly just to accommodate your comment, and then I'm going to ask the planning commission a question. So, sir, do you want to, yes?
And what, in what range?
I want you to stand up and identify your name and your address.
She wanna do it, one zero zero seventy-five, can you come?
Give me the microphone so we can get you on record.
Be sure. What span of rent, we talk one day, week, month, half-year, year?
We haven't even discussed that. That, that's something that would be discussed if we were to discuss it. So it's not something that has, we've even broached yet, which is the question I want to ask the commission. So, plant, uh, thank you very much, yeah. So we're closed again on public, is there a consensus here that there's no enthusiasm for doing this? And that we don't see a problem, so let's not fix a problem that we're not thinking exists?
A lot of negatives.
I, I think there is.
What, you, you think what?
I think there is a consensus.
Okay, did I just say that incorrectly?
No, we need to which amendment.
You know, whether you said it right.
Is that appropriate? Okay, so-
I wasn't paying attention.
I did. Thank you, Sheldon, for that incredibly constructive comment. Does anyone want to make a motion that, to advise the commission, the city commission, that we don't want to do this right now because we don't see a problem, if it does become a problem, then we'll address it later?
I'll give it a shot.
Does that, I'll let you do that, does that need to lift the moratorium? Or is it just leaving that moratorium for six months and then letting it go?
The moratorium's a separate issue. You can recommend to the city commission that the planning commission does not want to undertake this issue and also recommend that the moratorium be lifted, and that would then go to the city commission for their-
Your own title, are you sure you don't want to? Because that's what I was going to say.
Go for it.
Yeah, go, someone do it.
All right, I make a motion that, I make a motion that we recommended the city commission no further study on short-term housing rental ordinances and the lifting of the existing eight-hundred-and-eighty-day moratorium.
Can I make a friendly amendment that if it comes to the community's attention, that there is a problem, we will address it at that time?
Of course.
So, uh, everyone comfortable with that motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
Suck it.
All, all those in favor, say aye.
Who was your second?
Me.
Jill, all those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? It's seven to one.
Was he listening?
You know, you've just voted on Sheldon.
Do you know what you voted on? Yeah, did you catch that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so we're moving on to the ne- next agenda item. It is, uh-
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
You know, we should have asked what your recommendation was, but it's too late for that now.
I think you did the right thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, have a good night. The next matter on the agenda is a site man review for two, one-two-seven-zero-eight Talbot. Okay, sir.
Sir. Hello again.
Why don't you identify yourself and your, your, just, who, who's with you and who are you?
My friends. We're proposing, I'm Patrick Gray from Hillen Homes. We're proposing the construction of the Willens residence on one-two-seven-zero-eight Talbot.
Okay, you want to make a presentation?
Everybody have the plans?
Yeah, people have the plans. I don't know if mine at home. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
I don't know about a presentation because you have exactly what we would like to see in front of you. David Moran approached us about putting this house together specifically because it's in Huntington Woods. They live in Huntington Woods, family, and this is what we came up with. Being that I've been in front of you all before, I kind of know the expectations of the city. Working closely with Hank on what do we want to see in new construction going forward. We believe we've implemented those items on this plan, so, open to thoughts.
Okay.
Hank?
Hank?
Yeah, I just want to be clear on a couple of things here. One, Mr. Ray has been in front of the planning commission two or three times. This house is still over the size of what's allowed. So the house comes in at twenty-six-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet, and what's allowed is twenty-five-hundred-and-twenty-one square feet. So the house will require maximum house size variance. The lot is a standard fifty-by-one-twenty-five lot in the R-one-D. The proposed front yard meets the requirements, the proposed height meets the requirements, the side yards and rear yard meet the requirements. The lot coverage at thirty percent is covered at twenty-nine-point-nine-eight percent, but still under. And the house at twenty-six-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet is a little bit over one-two-seven-two-oh, which is the house next with the west neighbor, which comes in at twenty-five-hundred-and-forty-six square feet. And it is over the house at the other side of it, which is the east neighbor, which comes in at eighteen-hundred-and-twenty square feet. The house, including all bonuses, character bonuses that are allowed in magnitude and the house size for lot, comes in at twenty-four-twenty-one, which is what was allowed at five-hundred square feet. So actually, the variance that's needed for that would be two-hundred square feet. Just over two-hundred square feet. So that's what it was, because I was going back and forth with their architect, two-hundred-and-twelve square feet. I was going back and forth with their architect about what size the house is allowed, and we finally agreed that there was one side of the house that didn't count as a twenty percent fenestration. As a result, that came off and that got us down to a point where we need the two-hundred-and-twelve square foot variance. I'll do that, it meets the requirements.
Hank, I'm sorry, could you go over that math again one more time for me, please, so I can-
You need two-hundred-and-twelve, you're two-hundred-and-twelve square feet over what's allowed.
Let me ask this question before discussion begins, did you know that, that you were two-hundred square feet over?
No, we thought we were slightly over, but not two-hundred-and-twelve, and I think Mrs. Willens might be having a reason why we, of course, respectfully disagree.
Can you do your math, Hank? I think, I think we're off on numbers here because the-
Well, the numbers I have, I got from your architect.
No, 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 I'm talking about the, what the zone, what the zoning will allow.
Your zoning will allow-
Up to twenty-five-hundred with square, square footage, and our plans total are twenty-five-seventy.
No, it doesn't allow twenty-five-hundred.
With character bonuses.
With character bonuses, it allows that, but you don't qualify for all the character bonuses. What you qualify for is roof height, detached garage, architectural details, which total five-hundred square feet. Nineteen-hundred plus five-hundred square feet is twenty-four-hundred, plus twelve square feet for, twenty-one, plus twenty-one square feet for your lot bonus size.
We, we didn't qualify on fenestration?
No.
How far, how far off were we on fenestration?
Your architect said that it was, it came out to two-hundred-something is what you needed for square feet, and you were at a hundred-and-sixty-something on one side.
Yeah, I thought we'd adjusted that number, we may have a bad number in there somewhere, but-
If I did, I got it from your architect.
Well, I don't doubt that. How far off do you think we are on fenestration, Hank?
Pardon me?
About forty?
Pardon me?
How far off on fenestration do you, does he say we are?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, I think you just don't qualify for it, because once it's, once it doesn't meet it, we don't, I don't keep track of that. You either get it or you don't.
Absolutely, yeah, we can meet, I mean. Hank, how much more footage does that give us if you need fenestration?
Come up here if you're going to say that you can have-
How much more footage does fenestration give us?
Well, fenestration would give you another hundred-and-fifty square feet. So it would bring down the total that you needed to approximately seventy-five.
Hank, sorry to interrupt, but isn't the max for the district twenty-five-hundred?
It's cap.
Right, so they can't get the hundred-and-fifty, they can only get up to twenty-five-hundred.
They can't get, you can get up to six-hundred, I mean, it's cap, so you can't get-
So, did you know that irrespective of the bonus points that you were receiving, that you were going to be over?
If, if anything marginally, which we would concede to.
Okay, so, okay.
I thought we were there on fenestration and we're-
So, let me ask you this question before we go through this whole thing, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't go through this whole thing, because we should- So, let me ask you this question before we go through this whole thing, and I'm not saying that we shouldn't go through this whole thing, because we should welcome public participation. Uh, are you guys willing to go back to the drawing board and bring it under the cap and work with Hank to make sure you know what the cap is? Because I can just tell you right now, you know, without hearing, uh, I would not be willing to vote for something that's over the cap like this on this type of lot in particular. Uh, particularly when I don't see, um, a, you know, a necessary reason why you should be over the cap. And this is a question of enforcing recently passed, um, ordinances, uh, that I think have to be enforced. It's not like you're on a big lot, you're on a small lot.
Yes.
So the question is, do you think it's a good idea for you guys to go back to the drawing board, shave off the square feet so you're under it? Or have a fenestration bonus and work with Hank to know what the limits are?
Hi, respect, Lauren Willens, um, respectfully, a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, in, in terms of the plans, we were under the impression that we were at the twenty percent fenestration, and on our final iteration, I would, I would claim for sure that we were.
Okay.
Um, so considering that, based on Hank's numbers, we were off by two twelve, if you subtract an additional hundred and fifty, we're talking a difference of seventy square feet. And before the commission, you know, we're residents of the city, we're fully committed to maintaining the character of the community, and we're not trying to do something outside of that, we assure you. We would be willing to concede and, you know, shave off that seventy square footage if the board would be willing to consider it. In terms of Michigan weather, as you guys are all familiar with, um, we do need to, if we're gonna break ground this year, get started at somewhat of a sooner pace. So, um, we would happily concede to that seventy, I don't know what the board's thoughts are on that, but.
Chairman, I would point out that even if there was some kind of agreement come to at this level, if it's over the maximum allowed size, they have to go to the zoning board.
Yeah, and so that's gonna, I think personally, I think the more efficient thing for you guys to do is to bring it in with, you know, work with Hank. Bring it in under the limit, agree what that limit is, whether you have the fenestration bonus points or bonus square footage, uh, which would probably take not much longer, if anything, than going to the ZBA. Because you would have to go to the ZBA.
And I, I think, go to the ZBA, but this would be unrealistic anyway. Before we continue, can I ask a couple of questions of the board? Before, when we've come before you, there's been some architectural qualities that, you know, some people on the board did and didn't like. If we took this very plan and we worked with this plan and brought our fenestration numbers in and, you know, our square footage numbers in to, to compliance, does anybody have a problem with the plan we have?
We should, we should, we should actually then go through the process if that's the issue.
Then go through the process.
So, so I think where we are right now is, we're gonna open it up for part, uh, public participation, uh, then we'll.
Well, I was gonna show you the rest of the elevations so the public might have.
Okay. Okay, I didn't know that you had that coming up. Uh, so, but, before you do that, Hank, uh, I think you've heard guys that were, were very, or at least I am, and I think others are, uh, committed to enforcing these new ordinances absent extenuating circumstances. So that's just a thing to keep in mind at all times going forward.
As are we, as are we for sure.
Yeah, I'm sure you are.
If I can make a statement before you open it, so I'm David Willens, we both live at one oh five one five Elgin.
Could you spell your last name?
Sure, W I L L E N S.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, I'll make, I'll make a statement and then, uh, let me respond to you first, which is first of all, we're not trying to build a house too big. I grew up in the city, uh, I, uh, and I moved away for medical training and moved back here. Because I wanted to be here, I wanted to raise my family here, um, and I'm completely committed to the regulations. In fact, uh, when we found out we could get on this agenda, we made, took about a week to make the revisions, uh, to the character of the house, to the fenestration of the house, and to the size of the house. Um, uh, to get in line with what we understood were the new reg, uh, regulations. So, um, I do hope the commission will take that into account, I do hope that we can break ground so that we can get this closed off by winter. Um, and it's your process, I'm, I'm, at your will, um, but we're committed to making sure this gets into the appropriate regulations and size.
Thank you. So Hank, why don't you continue?
Thank you, Allison. Um, basically what I'll do is I'll just show you the four elevations, uh, the front elevation meets the fenestration requirement. The east elevation is the one that falls short, and this is the one where the architect, uh, he had emailed me and told me that it was gonna be short. Uh, there is opportunities in here to put additional windows, to increase the sizes of the windows, and to perhaps meet the twenty percent requirement.
Hank, you, this is the wrong plan.
Yeah.
This is what you got, this is what I got.
This is the plan.
That's different than what's in our packet.
Okay.
Please watch me.
Hold on, hold it, sir.
Oh, that is the right one, I want to make sure you have the right guy.
Okay. But this is a rare one.
No, sir.
Ours are different from the, what you're showing up there.
Then Allison, you can put that on, we'll just take this off, and we'll go from there. The email that I had was fairly reasonable for the fenestration, so if there's a correction on that, then let's do this with the understanding that if they meet it, they can come up with a cap, which would be twenty-five hundred. Because the fenestration is what's keeping them from the cap. So these were the elevations that I were last sent to me by Timothy Ferris, is that?
Can we clarify for the record that the board does have the, the correct plan?
So, okay, so let's take a look at the plans here for this. Um, and again, the date that I have on these plans is August tenth, and the email that I have from the architect is after that. So.
The plans I have are, and I believe the board has, are August tenth revisions, as well, and I, I don't know what happened there, Hank.
Okay.
Hank, I've got two sets of plans.
So do I, I actually have two sets as well.
Because I have this, I have this set of plans from dated August, uh, I'm looking for August first and looking for August.
Mine are, mine are identical.
Okay.
At least on the good side.
Then that's, that's fine, they're identical, that's fine.
So where are we, are we at the cap or are we not at the cap?
Well, we're at the cap of twenty-five hundred.
I know, I know, but, but is the cap twenty-five hundred now?
Yeah, the cap's twenty-five hundred, assuming that that's correct, and I don't have anything to tell me that it is correct, because the last email that I had from the architect says it's not. And it was after the date of the drawing.
That's a concern, so.
So you could do this, you could, you could do this, you could proceed, you can do it conditional upon verification of the fenestration, which is fine. So they would either.
But you're still over.
To the extent that they would comply, right, they're still over, but.
Okay. Okay, so, what, anything else to present? I, I think the understanding is, is that they may have fenestration points or square footage, but let's go through the process.
But again, and then I will say this, and in their defense, they, they rushed to get on this agenda, because they do badly want to get in the ground. So to the extent that a conditional approval pending fenestration resolution could be as simple as adding a window, that's something that, if it was a pleasure of the planning commission, we could take a look at administratively between myself and Mr. Ray.
Absolutely.
So.
But are they still over the?
You're still, you've still got a, a hundred and twenty-two square feet.
So why don't we start with, uh, Dan?
I'm still confused at that.
But with the fenestration idea.
You got a twenty-five hundred square foot cap.
Maps is twenty-five hundred. The plan is twenty-six thirty-three.
And you're twenty-six thirty-three.
Your plan is twenty-six thirty-three, so you, twenty-five hundred's your hard cap.
Okay, so let's open up for public participation right now, anyone who's got a public comment, who's identified himself or herself? Uh, how about, sir? I'll repeat what I said before.
I'm Fred Lindholm, I live a block from the house at one oh eight six two Hart Avenue, just around the corner, just around the corner and on Hart Street, right at Scotia. Um, I'm an associate broker with Real Estate One, I lived here for forty-six years. And recently have sold a couple of houses, a couple of houses that were tore down, one on, one on Talbot and one on Elgin. That, uh, were then obviously built new. And these plans seem to be very similar to what the other plans were calling for. And what, uh, young people want in the city here. And I saw, I didn't see anything, I didn't, I didn't check the math like Hank does, but, uh, everything, the features of the house were what everybody wants. When they build a new house here, so, that's, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, very much. Ken, how about participations, Paul?
I don't.
Can I just add one thing before you do your roundtable on this one? Just to be clear, um, the other thing is the garage has to be fifty percent of the same material as the house.
Yeah.
So he's a little short on that, but, um, Mr. Ray and I have had discussions about that, he said if he had to add more, correct, it wasn't a problem.
No issue there at all.
Hank, there's also a letter in our packet from a neighbor.
That is correct.
And did you want to call attention to that, or?
Uh, those are for a year out of the page, I mean, I don't necessarily have to read it into there, but there was a letter from a neighbor that was dissatisfied with the plan.
Thank you, I'm gonna go back to Ken, Ken.
Yeah, I, I'm not opposed to the overall design in any way, I would like to see the garage be fifty percent, um, of the primary material as well. But I do have a concern with the size, and it's blatantly above our maximum on our ordinance, so I wouldn't be able to support it.
Aaron?
Um, we've thrown a lot of numbers around really quickly, and for the benefit of the, for the benefit of homeowners, um, I think we should be very clear. So the, the lot maximum of a standard lot is twenty-five hundred square feet, right Hank?
That's with all the bonuses.
With all the character bonuses, which cap out at six hundred regardless of what you have.
Regardless of what you have, but it still can't exceed, so if you got all the character bonuses, you would be at twenty-five hundred square feet.
So adding the hundred and fifty adds a hundred. However, you also have a additional square foot bonus based on lot size, if I'm reading this correctly?
Twenty-one square feet.
So your house max, if all character bonuses are approved, is twenty-five twenty-one?
That is correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we're all safe, because there are a lot of numbers thrown around.
I was hoping for a clarification.
Right.
Secondly, can we specify the architectural details that are included to make up twenty-five hundred, to make up the two fifty square feet? The three, I'm not the most architectural detailed person here, so I just love to make sure I understand. I see the soldier course, I see the mutton bars.
Soldier course, mutton bars, wood windows, um.
The wood windows are being called out?
Yeah, and there was also, I believe, shudders on this, where's their name?
Not on the.
Not on the, okay, but there was soldier coursing and roll locks and mutton bars and, uh, wood framing around the windows up top.
Thank you.
And the windows were wood, so there's actually like five.
I have no issues except for the already stated concerns about, um, maximum house size of the lot, thank you.
I guess ditto to both of them, I have no objections to the, the house design in general, but the overage of the square footage is problematic, especially in light of the fact that we've just gone over all of these square footage amounts.
Thank you.
So, I, I have the same concern everybody else does about being over the square footage maximum, that is not something that I could support. We, we spent a lot of time in those ordinances and I think they need to be upheld. I have a question for you as Hillen Homes. This house that you bring forward, as the realtor pointed out, is the same house you bring forth every time you come in. There are other things, you know, you change the front porch, you might change the style of the thing, the posts. Have you given any thought to modifying your design for things like the stepped-in second floor to reduce the massing of the house? Have you given any thought to things like that and varying the house that you're putting up? So that it's not the same house going in here and here and here and here, and this has nothing to do with you guys, this is me talking to Hillen Homes. Have you given any thought?
I, I disagree that it has nothing to do with them, I, I, I build what they want me to build, you know? So when the customer comes to me and says, we like this plan, this is what we like to see, uh, as the gentleman indicated that, that's the trend, um, you know, some people like it, what we build, and, and some people don't, I, I, I get that. But I build for, for the customer. So if that's what they want, that's what I'm gonna build.
My concern is, is that it is very much a box. It's very square, and it's, I look at all of the houses that Hillen Homes has put up in Huntington Woods, and they are all a box. And I just would urge you to think about things like the stepped-in second floor. You can still have all the features that the client wants, but reduce the massing, because part of our problem and part of the reason why we did all these character bonuses, we are trying to reduce the massing of some of these houses. And this house does not accomplish that, I really don't think it does. Um, and that, that is my opinion, and, you know, I'm entitled to it and you're entitled to not like my opinion. Um, but, you know, when you've got one house on one side of it that's, you know, eighteen hundred square feet, that's a lot of massing. It just, it's just, it's just a, it's a very big house, and, and I get you can bring it down, you can bring it down into the square footage, and you can still have your maximum square footage. But you could also do it and reduce that massing a little bit by stepping in that second floor. So that, it's just, it's a comment, um, but my main comment is I agree with everyone else that I will not support something that goes over the maximum cap.
Uh, I agree with everything everybody said, most specifically what Jill just said, um, I would argue that architectural detail is not a character bonus. I don't know that they need everything, um, to me, this is cookie cutter builder, it's, and it's too big.
It's a box.
Yeah, that's all.
Um, have you talked to your next door neighbors about this, have you shown them the plans?
No, sir.
Because it would be helpful to know what, what they had in order, um, and I know they were given notice and.
That's, I was just gonna say.
And there, and there is a letter in here from a neighbor.
That's, I'm in the next block. Talking about the addition of.
But right behind them, right behind them.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's pretty close.
I, I, I'm gonna depart a little bit from what seems to be the consensus here, um, with a minimal kind of, assuming that the fenestration bonus i- is definitionally met. And subject to the garage, I think, um, I think a hundred feet over is just something that legitimately falls within the, we're not the zoning board. I think that if it is otherwise compliant with the, um, with the standards that are in the ordinance, and I grant your point about mass, I do. But if it's otherwise acceptable, I think a, um, a variance of a hundred and twelve feet is something that is legitimately within the consideration of the zoning board, not us. Um, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna exercise that discretion, I mean, this isn't the guy who came in at eighteen hundred over the permitted, okay? I, I've got no problem with the decision that we made on that one. But the zoning board exists, and they can make their own decisions about whether there's hardship or relating to it. Now, I, I have my doubts about whether or not this technically meets the standards, but I don't think it's our position on the planning commission to exercise that discretion on their behalf. That's my two cents.
Thank you. Allison?
Um, I agree with most of what was said, I think the, I, I think to benefit the residents, um, they ought to have a very clear understanding about what it might mean to go to the zoning board and be denied, you're talking about adding another month. And then probably another month, because you're.
It is an intention to go to the zoning board.
So, right, so if, if it's, you know, I, I would say pending a reduction, I would not, not be able to approve it as is.
That's what I was gonna say, are we technically at twenty-five twenty-one, Hank?
Assuming the fenestration bonus.
We will, we would concede to a twenty-five twenty-one square footage with a fenestration for conditional.
So I, I can't vote to approve a plan that we haven't seen. Um, and what's bothering me, uh, is a distinct lack of either communication or with Hank, or one of the two, respect for the ordinances. Uh, because there aren't any, uh, express mitigating reasons for the overage. Um, and whether it's a hundred or two hundred, we have an ordinance, and it's clear that you came to us thinking that you could get a variance just by asking for it, notwithstanding the ordinance. Which kind of is, um, my inference, could be wrong, but that's what I'm, I'm inferring. Uh, I haven't heard a justification for it, uh, that there is a necessity, or that it's a big lot, or, uh, you can't shave it, uh, and still accomplish your ends. It was just like, we're gonna go over, and that to me is something that, you know, it doesn't sit well. Uh, I could be wrong, of course, um, but when you take that into account with, uh, the fact that this was done quickly, um, and, uh, that it is kind of a box. Uh, my, you know, strong feeling is that it's gonna have to go to another. strong feeling is that it's gonna have to go to another vote, give it another month. Hopefully it'll do it in a way that obviates the need for an appeal to the zoning board ordinance or an appearance before them. But I do respectfully disagree with what Sheldon said. I, I think that we did spend a lot of time on these sizes and they're not to be taken lightly. And that if we are to vary for them or recommend approval by the ZBA, there's gotta be some cognizable reason that kind of jumps out at us. And on this one, there wasn't, at least not one presented to us.
Andy?
Yep.
And so might I add, again respectfully, I'm okay with everything you've said. And we've allowed additions or changes in sizes of windows sort of on the fly. When you're talking about shaving square feet, I'm not comfortable with doing that.
Oh, I assume that you weren't. I was just talking about the suggestion that, you know, if you were within seventy-six, maybe because we're not the ZBA. Well, we passed these ordinances and they were approved by city council.
We're not asking for.
Okay, city commission.
We're not asking for any, we do not wanna go, again, we do not wanna go to the zoning board. It's not my interest to push the envelope to the extent that we're asking for special permission. Hank and I have sat down extensively and talked.
So what I would recommend, assuming the vote was where I think it's gonna go, is you talking to Hank, listen very carefully as to what his suggestions are, as to where the numbers are, et cetera, et cetera.
Might I make a suggestion, Mr. Chair? What I would suggest at this point in time since, to save them re-notification, anything like that, I might suggest that you table them since they basically have to just shave a hundred and some square feet off the house. And in the result of doing that, it would guarantee them a spot on the September agenda. And as a result, it would still allow them to get into the, into the ground this year.
And that's, that's would be our goal as well. I do encourage you to listen and consider at least Jill's comments because, you know, we, the ordinances don't speak to this, so I'm not gonna suggest that this would be the basis of a vote, because it wouldn't be a basis of my vote, but the idea of, you know, having, I won't call them cookie cutter houses, but houses that are very, very architecturally similar, scattered throughout the neighborhood, I don't think serves the neighborhood well. Now, the ordinances don't address this, but, you know, as, you know, a professional who does work here, it's just something that I think I personally would ask you to consider. So I'm ready to take a motion. Does anyone wanna make a motion?
Move to table.
Hold on, she has a question.
Could I, could I respond briefly? David and I are also members of this community, as I've stated. And I just wanna clarify before the record, we've spent a lot of time going over these plans. And I know your comments were directed to our builder, but as your fellow residents and as fellow professionals in this community, I would like to clarify that a lot of thought went into these plans. We want this to be a family home. We are expressly trying to build a four bedroom home because we wanna add to this community. We have a six-year-old son that's a member of this community. So I ask, as you review these plans before the city, that you remember that a family is planning on living in them. And we've spent the past five months very hardly working and changing and editing, and we did not come before this board lightly. This is my first time before this board and I was under the impression that, and there's nothing in the rules that says that there's anything against an administrative decision or a variance of that nature. So I apologize. I did not mean to insult any of your, or take advantage of any of your time. I would just like to clarify that there was a lot of thought that went into this home. Those extra twenty-one square feet that I believe we calculated in the event that fenestration is correct could certainly be shaved off in a very easy fashion. And I just, I just wanna clarify before the.
And I apologize if, if anything I said, you know, suggested and perhaps it did, that you didn't carefully go over your plans and that weren't given a lot of time and attention. The only thing I was making reference to is just a personal preference, because as I said, it's not something that's borne out in the ordinances at all, is to avoid having a duplication of houses repeatedly in the neighborhood. It's something to be, I think, personally avoided.
And we understand.
It's in the master plan.
To avoid it.
There's, that one of the values is a variation.
I know, but it's not in the ordinances. But it's a, it's a, it's a community value. I don't think we can, in any event, let's go for a vote. Anyone wanna take a motion?
And I just wanna say, I don't think, my comments did not mean in any way to say that you did not spend time on this and that you weren't trying to live within the spirit of the ordinances. I wasn't suggesting that in any way. I was merely suggesting to Hill and Holmes that as they come forward in different spots in our community, I would like them to give more thought to reducing the massing and that stepping a second floor in a foot or a foot and a half or two feet or however it is, does not necessarily mean that you're affecting the livability of the home, but you're reducing from the outside the look of massing. So it, it isn't meant to say that you did not put thought into this or that you did not, you know, try and design it such that it is livable for you. That's not what I'm saying. I'm sure you did. My just, my concern is just with, as Andy said, the cookie cutter. I'm, I'm trying to.
So I think we can move for a vote. Does anyone make a motion to table?
Second.
What?
I wanna make sure I understood what the homeowners wanted here, right? Do you guys wanna, wanna table this at this point?
I mean, and, and excuse me, I'm not familiar with your policies and procedures. This is, again, my first time before this board. I am an attorney, so I am very good at following rules. But what my ask would be is assuming that our fenestration is, we agree that our fenestration would come up to the twenty percent, assuming that Erin's math is correct, which I agree with, or Mr. Sullivan's math is correct, I agree with, we would be approximate, we would be exactly twenty-one over the maximum allotment and it's.
Twenty-one, no? No.
No.
Two, twenty-six, thirty-three, less twenty-five, twenty-one.
Okay, so, so I guess my request would be, we would agree to vary, we would agree to reduce our plans by that a hundred and.
But I think you heard totally respectfully that, at least I don't, I don't know whether Sheldon does, because he spoke to it as well. I don't feel comfortable approving a design that we haven't seen.
That would be my ideal request. And I understand that that's not within the.
We would ask for a table, like Hank suggested, because that way we're guaranteed a spot in the September. We can make the changes to the fenestration.
Then you don't have to go to the ZBA.
Do what we can to try to accommodate the board's requests and we could do that. That would still get us in the ground this year and we'd not put them outside for financing.
And that's, I'm sorry, not sure how to say your last name, but we'll consider all the suggestions.
Thank you. So I think we do have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, any discussion on the motion to table until next month? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your good, good spirit and cooperation.
No, thank you.
What do you practice?
Um, John Stig.
Oh, you don't after it all right.
Very well.
How after I say hi?
I will do so.
Andy, I'm stepping down for the one on Nadine.
Oh, really?
That's next, yeah.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the house plan, site plan review for Nadine, Plan OO five-five.
Mr. Chair, for the record, it should be shown that Sheldon is stepping down for this as his direct neighbor.
Okay.
And also from Mr. Rosa Blatt, verification, he still needs five.
Yeah, you understand that, Mark, right?
Yes, sir. What were you thinking?
He still needs five affirmative votes.
You're gonna need five out of the seven. Okay.
Makes it tougher.
Hello, Mark Rosenblatt, Huntington Home. This is a home that I have purchased, an existing house that from my understanding, I had one zero zero five five Nadine, from my understanding, was purchased a long time ago, pushing two years maybe, maybe more. I'm not positive. A plan was put through the city, a plan was approved by the planning commission and upon pricing out what was drawn, the people who drew the, the house and had purchased the property decided not to build it. I since have purchased the home as is and have drawn a different plan that I'm hoping to get the approval by the planning commission to build and with the intention to sell the home to a, hopefully either a new or a transferred Huntington Woods resident. I do wanna make two quick corrections that I noticed while looking at these things. The most recent page, the single page that you have in front of you shows in the exterior finished materials, it shows the base brick is a Norman dark iron spot. The brick on the house was peeping and it's actually a painted brick, so the intention would be to match the size of the brick and the texture of the brick and then repaint the entire house. All the brick, the old and the new, will be painted. And then the only other thing is, and I have no idea why it says it, but it says stained concrete, which I know it costs more, but personally I think looks worse. So those are the, the two things I would just wanna call out so that you understand that that is not my intention, excuse me, it's not my intention to stain the concrete or to rip down all the brick, the existing brick. We are planning to keep. The right side of the house, as you face it on the street, which would be the west side of the house, is a detached garage right now. We will be pulling that down, re-digging footings for that, not only because it's unclear if they are proper footings or just a straight right wall, but we're, it's actually encroaching into the side setback. So we will be moving it away about a foot from the home on the west side neighbor. And then that will give us our five point one feet away and then a minimum of fourteen total. We're actually eleven point three, I believe, is the number on the existing east side of the home. The front stays the front and the rear, we are taking off an existing nasty porchy thing and putting a home that goes straight back, straight up from the existing and then attaching it all together. We do have a seventy-five foot lot, which we believe is a pretty good size. We have a ranch on one side, so we're obviously going to be higher than that. The other one, on the other side, we're same height and, and in the spirit of hoping to not block light or, or as the term used, sort of mask them off the map, we, you know, made sure that, that we have above our side setback as well as there's a buffer of a single story, one car garage between my east setback and their proper house. So that's it. Any questions? Hank, me? Thank you.
Hank?
Okay, thank you. These, Mr. Rosa Blatt supplied to me, supplied to me today, so I'm sure these elevations are correct. So can I take a look? This is the front of the house and this is what we're doing here. So I wouldn't mind, Allison, thank you so much. What we're looking at here is we're looking at a house. The house maintains the proper height. It gets the height bonus. He has stone trim around the doors and the windows, so it picks up that bonus as one of the architectural details. He's using mutton bars. He's also using trim around the windows on the sided portion of the house. And he's also using an Anderson wood clad window, not clad with wood. It is a wood window that is clad. So he picks up the architectural bonuses. By doing so with this house, he also picks up the fenestration bonus. If you'll take a look, these, there's twenty percent on the elevation on this side and also on the other sides. I'll go through it. So he picks up the architectural bonus, the fenestration bonus, architectural details. And he also picks up a lot more on his lot bonus because again, the lot here is not one of the sixty-two hundred and fifty square foot lots in that neighborhood. It's ninety-three hundred and seventy-five. So it's substantially more. So he is at twenty-five hundred and fifty-seven square feet. He's allowed twenty-seven hundred and thirty-one square feet. So he qualifies, he's under that. His side yard setbacks are acceptable. His rear yard setback is acceptable. His height is under again. And his front yard setback, which he's leaving the existing wall there, is at twenty-four feet, eight inches, but it exists. So what he's proposing is a colonial, quasi-colonial style of house. And again, this is the front elevation here. This is the west elevation here. This is the east elevation here. And this is the south elevation. So you can see he has a substantive amount of glass on all sides. On the rear of the house, which will bring your attention here, is he does have brick over here, but he also has a lot of siding on this type of side here, but he does break it up with the roof line across the back and the second floor addition. On all of that, there is a substantive amount of windows on the second floor of that. So these are basically the elevations as he has them. If there's any other questions or anything, I would be happy to answer it, is what I'm sure Mr. Rosa Blatt.
Thank you. Any public participation?
Thank you, Allison.
Want you again, identify your name?
Melissa Levine.
And your address?
One zero zero four five Nadine.
Thank you.
Okay, I have asked Mark this, but I just want him on the public record. It will not obliterate the light from, to my house. Is that correct? Why are you shaking?
I, I, I can't, can anyone say whether it'll obliterate the light?
No, I asked Mark. I'm asking him, but I don't have a public forum.
Oh, okay. Mark?
Oh, I assume it wouldn't. I mean, like I said, there's, there's, we're staying under all the height requirements and the setback requirements and the fact that you have the single story garage there before you ever even have a window. There's a ton of space between the two homes.
That's all. I just wanna.
Thank you.
And we're taking down a few trees that will get shade. It'll get shade over there.
Sir?
I'm facing the west side of the house. I know there is a garage, one floor garage. Now, you're gonna be two floors there in means, it's gonna affect the light in my house, you know, because the window, the big window facing east. And up to now, there was one floor garage without enough light. If it's legal, I mean, I don't know, I don't have to deal with that, but we can do something about that.
Mark, do you wanna address that concern?
Well, yeah, I mean, I, it's never my intention to sort of encroach on a neighbor or block light. However, as I mentioned, I'm working with a ranch on one side and to build a two-story house is allowed. I don't recall what the exact height, maximum height that is allowed, but I know we are under it and I think we're significantly under it. So.
Andy, I wanted to, just for clarification, the maximum height is thirty feet. The height where you have to start stepping it back at is over twenty-six feet and he's at twenty-five feet, five inches.
Okay, so I'm, I'm below the height where the city actually mandates me to set back. The other thing, as I was just saying, is we're, we're taking this just massive nasty looking tree out. It's in the way of what we're doing. And that should open up some more light to both sides as well, because right now the canopy on this tree is just gigantic. It's probably as large as, if not larger, than the second floor, the whole, the way the canopy of the tree comes down.
I'm Alice Marotti. I live on one zero zero six four Elgin, so I'm behind the lot that he wants to build on. And I'm sad about this taking the tree down. It's a substantial sycamore that sits against the sky and is, is very handsome. I don't think the canopy is, we call that shade. We, we just don't just call it a nasty tree. So I just, I came here because I was interested in what was going to happen to the tree and it sounds like it's what I was afraid of, but I, I just wanted to be on the record saying
Mark, what's your?
That I'm sorry to lose the tree.
What's your response to that concern?
Well, twofold. The way that our city is set up, the tree is on our lot. I think we went over this long ago, but it's our tree. We can take down our tree. Number one. Number two, I'm not gonna, clearly not gonna please everybody.
Good thing Mark is not here.
I clearly can't please everybody. Two of the neighbors on either side want more light and a neighbor in the back wants shade. I'm not gonna please everybody.
But Mark, just so you know, so for your ratification, very rarely do we have multiple neighbors complaining about a plan before we're asked to approve it. This is an anomaly.
Okay.
So I'm hearing something. Whether that translates into violation of ordinances that we're duty bound to enforce, I can't say. But this is an anomalous situation, Mark.
Actually, do you have an issue with the house itself or just with the tree?
I have an issue with the house that it's going to smoosh the tree.
Okay, so. I think we're talking a little bit different. This is not an issue with the house.
I'm not saying that I don't like.
It's an issue with the tree.
I know. I understand.
Thank you.
But we do. But we do care deeply about our trees and Huntington Woods.
We do, and we know that, you know, when Huntington Woods was built, they planted some unfortunate trees. You know, we've got Chinese elms and things that people wouldn't normally put in their yards, but if you could drive past and look at this tree, in the summer and in the winter, it's an elegant tree.
Fortunately or unfortunately, depending on one's perspective, the ordinances don't address this.
I was afraid of that, but I just wanted to say.
But sir, do you want to make another comment?
Something related to the tree. This is a sycamore.
Yes.
And for the last 10 more years, it makes me sick more and more. Because it drops, it drops bark, it drops leaves, it drops branches, it drops fruit nonstop. With my own, you know, goodwill, I helped it, because I was, previously I did landscaping, I just retired, but regardless, I still did it after I did. I helped my neighbor to come and make a pile, and whoever didn't carry tarps from this backyard, it doesn't know what is to leave with this type of tree, but it messes. Her backyard, because I had her, and it messes my yard nonstop around the clock. And I appreciate Mark taking this tree. My opinion, it deserves five medals.
It's a what?
It deserves five medals, I mean.
Okay, we have another member of the public who wishes to identify herself.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Kerwin at 10034 Nadine, so across, kind of. This might be something everyone knows, and I missed this, but I had a question, which is, is this house being built just to sell to a mysterious person that we don't know yet, or is there, is this being built for someone? And if it is being built for just the market, is that something that usually successfully works without sitting there for very long? And I wanted to weigh in, just on a positive note, I'm really happy to see something happening with this house, because we're tired of it sort of sitting there, unoccupied, and sad. So thanks for trying to do something.
Thank you.
Mark, do you want to address those issues?
Well, I'm happy to make it less sad. It is not a sold house, it is a project, it will be built, and the intention would be to sell it quickly, yes.
You were here recently, maybe a year or so ago?
Uh-huh.
How'd that one go? Did you sell that?
That is sold, yes. That is sold, that sold before I put a shovel in the ground. It is, as Hank and I have talked about many times, there's only so many addresses in this city, and when you improve upon something, if it's done right, in my opinion, it will sell. Obviously, you have to keep your costs in check.
Any, any other public comments? Okay, public participation is closed. Kim, did I start with you last time, or was it Allison?
I started with you.
So Allison?
So as far as the design is concerned, I mean, I think, you know, it looks good. The only thing I will say is, I agree with you with the tree. I have this tree in my backyard, and there's a love-hate relationship with this tree. I have not stopped raking since the beginning of the summer, and will not stop until the end of November, so I don't have a problem with that, but I really don't have any problems. Size is good, so.
Helen?
Helen.
Right, sorry. Mike?
No issues.
Over great. Jill?
I don't have any problems.
Guys?
No comments. My only concern is, I am concerned about the 360-degree treatment, and is there a reason, because I thought this extension off the rear was all-new, why that wouldn't be brick to follow under the 360-degree treatment?
The extension off the rear is all-new, and it's just to break up materials, it just gets monotonous. I mean, you know, a lot of people come in and, yes, brick is more than siding, it's not that much more. It breaks it up. That's really what it's about.
To me, it does exactly what the previous home presented did do. That makes sense. It is not a big brick box.
It's not a box.
I like the mix, I like the mix.
No, no, I want to get the situation.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm more used to it when it's mixed on all sides of the house.
Right.
No, I'm good with it.
Sorry?
Is it three of the four sides?
Yes, three of the four sides are 100% brick.
Steve, this is really just a personal preference in looking at it, and the, I crocheted the stone trim above the door. I don't know if that's just there for show, or if we've been on engraving the address into that.
Yes.
That, again, personal preference, doesn't have anything to do with ordinance, that screams cheesy to me. It's, to me, it is not a very elegant treatment, it's a stamped cookie cutter kind of treatment, so I would encourage you to think of a different way to label the address on that home than that, and again, just a personal note, otherwise, no, fine.
On the west exterior elevation, just briefly describe why you couldn't have a window on the part where there's just siding.
This area right here.
I'm sorry?
This area right here.
Top left?
Yeah.
Bottom right?
Yeah, bottom right.
Bottom right, oh, wait, didn't put it in there, sorry. That is, I gotta go to the floor plan, but if I'm correct, that is kitchen. Sorry, I'll give you a second.
Is the ceiling at ovens?
Yeah, you've got ovens.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I'm looking at the wrong spot. Yes, that's where cabinets are. The only thing that could be put there would be something that would fit in a backsplash. It's an eight-foot wall, I've got, you know, approximately 42 inches, the first 42 inches will be cabinets and a backsplash, four-inch backsplash, and then I need a header height, upper cabinets, I mean, you'd literally be talking about a window that, you know, would be 18 inches max, that's all that could fit there, and it would be a very oddly-sized window compared to the rest of them.
It's not that big of a space.
No.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Plus your, plus your AC unit is right outside here.
Which would pretty much eliminate the possibility of putting the AC unit there.
Right.
Does anyone want to make a motion?
Motion to approve as presented.
One second.
Any discussion? All of them in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the site plan review for the residence at 10755 Elgin.
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening.
You're welcome. Our purpose is that they could present from the podium to help her with her reports.
Okay.
Me?
Yes, thank you.
I'll be speaking. Hi, I'm Renee, I'm a designer for Gina Barreto, the owner of 10755 Elgin, and basically an addition on the backside of the house, as well as two dormers on the front side of the house. The owners wanted to add this to better serve their family, they like to entertain, and there are some...
Do you give us the existing features too?
May I? Sure. This kind of shows the existing condition of the space, so what we're adding, we can really help liven it up, make it more beautiful. We're keeping the siding around the exterior, or we're replacing it, but it will be a hardy plank siding, adding a brick water table to give some different materials, and yeah, that's right now.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Hank?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Allison, if I can trouble you once more, for just, so we can kind of get a little perspective. This is the house as we're looking with the dormers proposed for the front of this, you know, and anytime Renee correct me if I'm wrong, I'm gonna do this, okay? So basically, what we have here now is, we have this proposed house with the dormers with an architectural style of shingle which adds some interest to it, shutters on the front of the house, and everything for the house except for the two-top dormers or dog houses, whatever your pleasure is to call them, really pretty much looks the same. So basically, you're kind of taking this from a bungalow, which it is, to more of a Cape Cod appearance on the front, which is not out of character, and it's not really a far stretch from the front. The east elevation, what they've done is they've taken the front here, this area in through here is the side of that gable, so that you have a perspective, and they've taken the ridge line straight back with a reverse gable off the back. This goes to this point right here, so the peak is here, the rear addition is not higher than the peak. They've added fenestration on all sides, which does meet our requirements. They've also added shutters, mutton bars on all sides for that, so that it does meet the requirements for this as well. I'll go this way. Over here, they have a side, they have a door over here on the side of the house, the chimney is staying the same, in the same location. Again, mutton bars, some of these windows are existing, and the biggest change, obviously, will come from the back of the house, which would be here. So what they've basically done is, they've taken, they've broken up some of the material here, they've added shutters, one on each side of the mold window set, to give it some, to give it some detail at 360-degree by using mutton bars and the shutters on all sides. They've added returns on the side of the window, which is admittedly for a low roof, but it does prevent, provide some architectural interest for the returns on the roof. They have the porch up here, which does have a rail, which again adds some architectural detail. This does open to allow, to allow access to this back rear porch, as does the lower part here. Columns, box columns will be taken into here, which shows the addition on the porch. And again, this right here is the block foundation which they're showing. My understanding is that they were considering also a thin brick or something to go over that, and they've also included a exterior finish choice palette. This right here is the dimensional shingles that they're looking at on the bottom right. On the top left, that's your siding colors, so you're gonna see there's gonna be like earth tones, and it would complement the gray brick, or, I'm sorry, the red brick that they're planning on using for the exterior finish. So going back to this from the front, this is really what you'll notice, is the dormers on the front, and then going back to here, this is the rear, and then again, this is the side view on the one side, which is showing fenestration here, including the door, and also on this side, which is including the, you know, the 360-degree treatment. The house in and of itself comes in with two stories, again, and it has to step in at 26 square feet, we're at 25.5. The front yard as proposed required 25 feet, it's at 26.3 currently existing. The side yards, minimum five, total 14 are required. 4.9 on one side is existing, but the other side, the total now comes to 16.7, which complies with our ordinance. The rear yard, 30 feet is required, and they're proposing 58.5, which is significant. The lot coverage at 30 feet, which is allowed, because of the lot size can cover, the lot size can cover 2,061 square feet, because this is an extra-large sized lot, and they cover 29.02, so it falls under the maximum lot size. The maximum house size on this shows up at 2,700-plus square feet, and they're, because of the extensive lot size, and they're at 24.49. So basically, what it does is, they're adding a lot of space in the rear of the house, this is kind of a cross between a bungalow, colonial, Cape Cod, so it's actually 1.75 stories is what Oakland County will end up determining it. It's sided house, so that the siding is, the siding should not be an issue. The brick that they're adding is below the existing house, which you'll see on the bottom there, that they're going to fix the foundation and add that, so that it has a measure lift to the foundation. The garage currently is detached on that, so when you take a look at it, you'll see that, and you can't really see it, but the garage is located back here, so on the drive side of that house. It shows the comparison in height to the houses on either side, and you'll see that it falls at or below the house on either side. That's kind of where we're at with this. Their calculations are under what's allowed, and they did pick up the roof height, the fenestration bonus, and the architectural detail bonus to get them to that, plus their lot size bonus. So having said that, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them, and if not, I'm sure Renee could answer them as well.
Thank you. Public participation, anyone want to comment?
Andy, I'm sorry, I gotta ask Hank about this before we jump to public participation.
Yeah, we got...
And it comes to the drawings?
Yeah.
I'm confused.
Okay.
So, to me, when I look at the south elevation, and I look at either the east or west elevations, the drawings are not consistent across those elevations, and by that, I mean if you look at the south elevation, although shallow, that roof extends downward somewhere on the order of three feet, four feet, but when you look at the east and west elevations, I don't see that, and in fact, I don't see the entire side of the house stepping in along the roof line in the east and west elevations either. And I can draw what I mean on here, but it doesn't match.
So does this have to do with the roof pitch and what it potentially...
If I may?
No, exactly. I understand what you're saying.
There's a roof line here, and a roof line here, that is not...
It's just a straight line.
Side elevation.
And it looks like it comes a little bit of a pitch to it.
There should be a roof line here, according to this.
How does that match up?
And this height here doesn't match this height here.
What's what, back there?
That is the rear of the house. So this is right here.
Because that's what is confusing me about...
There's a pitch here, right?
What are you seeing?
I see what he's, yeah, I see what he's...
Your side elevation reflects the ceiling pitch that showed on the rear elevation.
It shows no pitch for roofs there, it's just like a straight line. So you cannot see what that pitch looks like from this angle, it's not showing pitch. It looks like, it looks like a flat roof.
I was gonna ask about that. That's what I didn't understand.
I understand why it's dealing with a box.
Okay, sorry, sorry, so...
No. Yeah.
So what, why don't you present, but I think we all had a question about that peak, and it's all just coming up in different ways.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I just thought it would have been important to clarify before we tried to...
Because I was gonna ask about the peak, but why don't you address Aaron's concerns?
Originally, we were gonna go full width of the existing house, and after talking, we came in, because the roof pitch is gonna be kind of an issue, not an issue, but, you know, we want to keep, since we're not going any higher with the existing footprint of the building, the roof height of that second floor is gonna, we're trying to stay as close to eight feet, if not a little bit more, which right now, we are at, at eight feet on that second floor. So when we came in on either side, and I know that's not picking that up now on those side elevations, so we'd have to add that, and can you add to this? Will this have to remain on that one side?
So let me ask a question. Are you an architect?
I'm an interior designer.
Oh, okay, so are we looking, folks, at accurate renderings of the elevations?
I don't think so.
What would have to happen, Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify further here, is that if you take a look at this pitch right here, which looks something akin to a 312 pitch, okay, and then you take a look at this, the actual roof line would be a lot closer to the tops of these windows...
Correct.
...than would be here.
And did you say something is stepping in on the sides?
The whole back elevation is coming in three feet on either side of the existing.
Okay, see, that's not showing on this either, so...
Well, what you, that shaded part that you see behind it...
Okay.
In the key, that entire shaded part behind it is the existing structure.
But you're right on the side elevation.
But the side elevations, you are correct, that did not get picked up on there.
Yeah, and what would happen is that this, this gable here would continue down to approximately here and tie into the roof that would go to the rest, so this ridge line that you see right here would be one, two, three boards down.
So it's sitting almost on top of those windows?
Pretty close.
So those, well, the one above the door is an existing window, the other ones being new, might...
Yeah, but that wouldn't, that wouldn't change anything as far as the roof pitch, so your roof pitch would still come down to here.
Oh, I see.
And that's what it would be in order to make a 312 pitch. So for purposes of...
And it would do that on the same, on the east...
It would do it the same on both sides.
On the east elevation as well.
So what would happen with that is, at that point, and again, it would have to be picked up, because when she would submit for construction drawings...
On the east elevation as well.
So what would happen with that is, at that point, and again, it would have to be picked up, because when she would submit for construction drawings, Dwayne would have that have to be shown. So basically, what you're looking at is, for, for planning drawings here, you're looking at this roof line, which the bottom of this is right here, would actually be down about right here to make the 312 pitch, assuming Edith's lap siding.
Okay, but if you're looking at the, at the side elevations, where do you determine where that step-in starts?
If you go to the east elevation, do you see that, that vertical line that shows exist, existing structure, new structure?
Okay.
That vertical line, and underneath the bottom windows, it shows you where the existing structure is and where the new structure starts, on the east elevation.
That's where the step-in would occur.
So that's where you have that.
Okay, but, but the, but where you say existing structure, there's a whole bunch of that, go back, there's, there you go, there's a whole bunch of that, isn't, this, this bungalow would have come down like this, right?
That is correct.
So this is all new, this is not existing structure, so this is, so this is at the same level as the rest of this, and then it's stepping in back here. I, I'm just having a really hard time.
Well, I have a question, Hank.
Visualizing how the whole thing is gonna look as a final project.
And, and not to be legalistic about this, but we've got two, two issues right here, at least. And I'm curious about how they do or do not implicate the ordinances. We have, or what we can do tonight, we have renderings that are not accurate, and that they're materially inaccurate, so that we're not actually looking at what we're approving. So that's problem number one, but my second issue is, I've personally never seen a design quite like this, with the peak in that location, and it's architecturally highly unorthodox, in a way that it's very foreign to me. Is there anything in the ordinances, or any other, you know, authority that we can cite that addresses the uniqueness of this situation?
May I just, there was actually a house that was...
Wait, wait, I just, that was just, I'm asking Hank a question.
Yeah, ju, just so that, just so that there is, the, the real issue is, is that if you feel that you need to see a drawing that would show this roof line dropping to here, it would be from here?
Well, no, that, that's one question, which is, is it appropriate to pass on something that we haven't seen? But my next question is, let's assume that they present something that is an accurate reflection of what they intend to build, but the, the, the design and the architecture is highly unorthodox. I've never seen it before, and I'm wondering whether there's any ordinance...
Andy?
Hold, hold, let me finish my question. That, whether there's any ordinance that addresses this type of unorthodoxy?
You, you, the answer is no.
Okay.
But what you can do is, you could make a motion to approve, subject to the roof actually coming down to meet the pitch, the 312.
I get that, I get that.
You can do that. And as far as that, she's delineated where she feels that that's gonna return, and shown it in this drawing here, which is the same on both sides. So what's on this one here, and I can't accurately see it, but there's no line on this side. So the same thing would be the same way on both sides, so there'd be a step in there.
Again, it's difficult to visualize it.
It is difficult, yes, it is difficult.
Really hard to visualize it.
It is difficult.
And are we giving them a character bo, or a bonus based on stepping in?
No.
So Mike, you had a point.
Yeah, unless I'm missing something, I don't see this as unorthodox at all.
You don't?
No, I, I think gabbling into the back of a bungalow, or a Cape Cod is...
It's a reverse gable, it's very standard.
It's very standard.
There's actually a house right across from it.
Okay, okay.
I'm saying this, because my first house in Oakland Woods, I did this, this exact thing, and got approved.
Well, the, the question was actually mooted by the fact that you said, there's no ordinance that addresses the situation anyway.
That is correct.
So I, in any of them?
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we've got to lay the land in terms of what the issues are, why don't we start with Kim?
I really am having a hard time visualizing, and I've done the same thing that Erin had done, and looked at it and said, this is one big flat wall.
Yeah.
But then I looked at the roof layout and said, it's not, but I can't, I really can't visualize what I'm saying yes to.
Okay.
At this point.
Erin?
I apologize to the homeowners, but I...
That's me, this is the builder, Dan.
I apologize to the homeowner, but I, I feel like you've got to have a drawing here. There seems to be a disconnect that, I think, I think the ma, I think that the math or the drawing needs to show it to make sure it's properly rendered, and people can, and vote on it. I can't, I can't visualize what I know needs to be there, and understand if it's appropriate.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I apologize.
No, I didn't mean to interrupt you, sorry. Respectfully, on the plan view, it does show the step-in of three feet on either side. Those, obviously, it is hard to imagine it or see it visually on the...
So let me, let me state it very plainly, I'm not convinced you could fit those windows in there until you draw it out properly, and it's not drawn out properly. And so, for your sake, I would say you should really get the drawings fixed.
Well, and that was a comment I was gonna make, I think those windows, in looking at that side elevation, those windows sizes need to come down in order to accommodate that. So that, earlier, that was my point too, the ones existing are existing, but where the new ones are, where that would come down, those can very easily decrease and still remain, which is... Right, but I'm also saying, when this comes down, it's gonna either butt right up against that header of a window, so that size would need to come down as well.
Okay, we're gonna move on to Eric. David?
David?
I got Erica, I'm like, I always do that. No, 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 you've got a big beard now. I see the beard, you don't see the beard? You haven't shaved in a few days.
You should have seen me yesterday, I did shave. Just do, to what they've already said.
I, I'm having the same problems, and I agree with Erin wholeheartedly, that you want to make sure that they're rendered properly, and that the sizes are gonna fit, and that we're approving something that is really what you're gonna build, so.
I am not struggling, just, I think because I went through this almost with an identical type house, I think the issue, the only issue I'm having is that the architect screwed up on the drawings, on the, on the elevations. I, I can visualize it, but again, I don't have any issues with it, but I think maybe it's because I've gone through it.
Too many moving pieces.
So what can be done? Is there, what can be done to make, because I, the way...
Here's, here's what I might suggest. Here's one of a couple things, if it's not a pleasure of the planning commission to approve contention upon the roof being done on a plan administratively checked, then what I would do is, I would suggest that the planning commission offered the resident a consideration of the table for the next meeting, make the corrections, and the story, see if it works. And that would be, that would be it, which means you wouldn't be put back that far behind. It wouldn't require any zone board of appeals, it wouldn't require anything other than coming back with a plan that could be more flushed out or detailed, and, and measured out. I would point out that the roof plan shows the step-in on both sides, the survey shows the step-in on both sides, the floor plan shows the step-in on both sides. The problem that they're having is with the roof detail. I would suggest that basically, we correct the roof tail for the, the roof detail for the next time, and just come back and show that. Other than that, if nobody else has a philosophical problem with the plan other than the roof line, that that would be the direction, that would be all that would have to be fixed.
Everyone okay with motion to table?
Just to add to that, I think it's not just that that, the drawing doesn't show the roof three feet down, it's that that roof line coming down affects proportionality with the windows and how that looks, and with that...
Well, we would recheck that, because depending on if the windows are renewed...
Right, but that's, that, I'm not just saying, I, oh, I get scribbling and saying, well, I can see where those shingles go, but...
Yeah, but we would do that indiscriminately, but the issue with that becomes...
It affects everything else on that plane.
I think it's on easy, I think it's easy.
If the windows get renewed, then it may affect fenestration.
Right, and that's what...
So that's, that's kind of where you're at, and I, and I get that, so we would revisit that, but, I mean, th, this may be something where it's a very short fix for Renee to do, and then it comes back in the next planning commission meeting with it's a pleasure to vote for the table. And it's, and it's, but I just want to make sure there were no other issues that had to be addressed.
Okay, guys, motion to table, anyone want to make it?
I move to table.
You guys okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes, it's table for next month, see you next month.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Final thing to the agenda, general public participation, anyone? Public participation to open and close, motion to adjourn.
Anyone?
Move second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, we're adjourned. Thank you.